We're going to call the meeting to order.[16.23][16.23](laughing) We'll call the meeting to order. I'm sorry for the delay. Wasn't paying enough attention all the time. Well, we'll start with a prayer and follow with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear wise and living Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. I pray you give us wisdom to govern, a sense of the true needs of our residents, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony. I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give an assurance of what will please you and what would benefit those who live and work in around the village of Hicksville. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
(inaudible) allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would first entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. I forget the exact terminology, but Cheryl did give you an amended agenda for tonight. We have a motion in the second to amend the agenda for the meeting tonight. Roll call, please, Cheryl.
Yes.
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 And I apologize, maybe Cheryl will call first, and you can take that, too.
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Yes.
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 Thank you. You have the October 3rd council meeting minutes in your packet. Is there any discussion about this? Any ... if there's no corrections?
I would make the motion to approve these minutes, yes. Written.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
We have a first and a second to approve the October 3rd council meeting minutes. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. You have the bills in front of you, and while you're taking into consideration the bills, I would also like to bring up again that Ken had a change order on the last approved bills listed. I would like to approve also for you to consider approving. You may have questions for Ken about it, or you may have already found out why we got a change order.
Well, I was the one that was concerned last time around, and I had not heard about it, so I'm not sure what's going on with that.
Yeah, I know that. I was the one who brought up a question last time around, that if it wasn't our fault, why are we paying for the change order? If it's something that we did...
No, it really wasn't anybody's fault. Just on some spots on West Smith and East Earth there, after they had milled down what they were supposed to mill down, they saw there was some bad subsurface.
But isn't that ... shouldn't they have that information as much as possible before they bid on the job?
Once you got x-ray vision, I don't know how you're going to see ...
Well, other contractors call them. I don't know.
They'll do what?
Call them.
Oh.
No. I'm not in favor of paying. I've thought about that every week, and I know you. I think we should.
Well, you're going to ...
Going to what?
Yeah, going to what.
Well, contractor's going to want paid. This is through the CDBG. If we're supposed to get $23,000 back, and drag this out too long, we're probably going to lose the $23,000. I really don't ... I guess I don't understand if there's conditions that nobody could know about in advance, but you still came in way under budget.
And it was fixed right.
Yeah, I mean, they could have just put asphalt with bad subsurface and it cracked a couple of years from now.
What's the sense in the bid process if you can just keep throwing add-ons to it?
And you brought that up many times in the past.
Well, I'm saying, until they started milling, they didn't know in some spot they were going to have to go deeper or do restoration.
I thought that's the chance the contractor took when he bid a project.
How much more was it?
$3,000.
$3,50, $93.
At least not at time. I just ... I was figuring it should have been the job of the contractor. He bid on the job.
So, in the case of a contractor not knowing what they're going to get in the future and knowing that we may not pay them, they could just give us a high bar bill on a bid? I mean, is that what things could turn to if we ... if they think that the village isn't going to ...
You know, we bid jobs every day. Sometimes we bid them, sometimes we don't. But if we have to bid wrong, and we lose them, let's say that we were underbid by someone, but yet we were lower, yet it cost us money, we have to stick by that bid, and then come back and say, "Hey, because you, you know, you lost money, come back to us. That's your bid, so stick with it."
Well, let's just take ...
Well, we've had change orders before on various projects.
Yeah, I think we kind of got a name for that. I mean, you get to Hicksville.
No, I wouldn't say that.
Well, I didn't ask you to say it. I'm saying it.
Well, on this one, I think you're wrong not approving. You're going to end up costing us more money by dragging this out.
Why would it drag out?
Because the project's got to be completed by the end of this year.
Is it completed?
Yes. But if you don't pay them, we're going to get drawn. We're not going to get our money until we get this settled.
So, what you're saying is they were under, but we got charged more, but if we drag it out, he's going to drag it out, so he gets his ...
Well, I'm sure he's going to come back and want paid. I mean, if you guys just call, Troy's going to end up dealing with it.
Just like this water project, like on Antwood Drive, will there be some things they run into that they charge extra? Change orders?
Well, they did right off the bat. They did right off the bat, and who has to eat that? We're not eating that, are we?
So far, on Nagel's known, nothing's been an actual change order. The two on Ogen, change order is a wrong word. That's the word that EMHT is using in their documents. There's a line item built in, though, for those that's also part of the bid, so they're not really change order.
But on Antwood Drive, there was a problem right off the bat. I was out there watching. I don't know what it was, but I was out there talking to those guys, and they told me we ran into something here we weren't prepared for. It's not your fault, because they knew I was from council. They said it's got nothing to do with you guys.
When they had to drop the water line from their ...
Well, well, that's ...
It cost you a four foot ...
Yeah, there's money in the ... there's money in the bid for work like that. There is.
Because you're a contractor, but you don't have to do the work.
Yeah.
We didn't pay it out.
Yeah, we just ...
That makes sense. And that probably should have been the case with the other project. Should have been moved in there, right?
There is a contingency.
If anybody is so inclined to make a motion, a separate motion, to pay or, I suppose, not pay the mega bill or the change order, and we could just ... we'll vote and get it out of the way?
Well, it looks like if Ken was correct, we're going to lose ... if we don't pay the thirty-some-hundred, we're going to lose the twenty.
We're going to lose $20,000.
Yeah. So, you got you.
I mean, I know what ...
So, what do you do?
I know what you're saying as far as people should know, but in this case, I don't know how you're supposed to see through two or three inches of asphalt.
I was going to ask you, when they're doing these construction jobs and they're actually on-site and digging, and do they have you come down there and says, "Hey, this is bad. We did have this in the quote. You knew about it long before they build us down the road."
Like I said, in short term, the board goes, "Forget it. We'll just pave over it," and it wasn't held up.
But you knew about it, you probably told them, "Fix it, fix it."
You want it fixed, or you want it crappy on you.
They come get you and you go back for it, right?
But if he'd have just paved over it, and it went bad in the first year, he'd have been back fixing it anyhow.
Well, you don't want stuff fixed right.
Well, Ken, we're going to be having a ton of projects we're running this town. These things are going to be coming up with some frequency in the next, I don't know how many years it's going to take for us to get all this done. So, I think we ought to set a precedent now, and I agree with you. I don't want to lose $28,000 by bending somebody over for $3,000. I understand that, and that changes how I think, but I just would like to make sure these things are taken care of in the future, so we don't have to have this.
I don't know if you ... I talked ... you've been involved in construction and everything. He goes, "The head engineer," he goes, "I've never not done a project in all the years I've done these bigger projects where I haven't had a change order in some way, shape, or form. It could be on our end, it could be on your end. You just never know when you start digging." They try to get as much information as possible.
Right, right. But the sense involved in that is, if it's on our end, we should be totally financially responsible for that.
Like I said, and some of that stuff's worked into the initial bid anyway, in the quote, to a degree.
And I think if you would go back through the past several years of water sewer projects, other than the episode we had with a particular contractor there on North Main, we've got abundance of change orders. I don't like bringing these, but in this case, I think it's justified. Sorry, I just want to make a statement.
Let's pay it. Don't risk losing the rest. Get the thing paid, move on, get our CDBG monies, and let's keep a closer watch on these type of things, because I know you're going to end up with a bunch of stuff down there, Pearl and Columbia and ...
I will ... I mean, yeah, we're all in this stuff.
Yeah. You already did.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying on those contracts, they have built-in line items to take care of that the contractor has already bid on.
Well, you have pretty much ...
At some point, they might hit that cap, and they'll have to go over then. Yes, I'll have a change order, I already have to approve it. So far, on Ogen, we're way, 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 way under the cap. I might have enough money left over to pave everything down there and be done once and for all. I don't know yet.
Don't say once and for all.
Well, I mean, for 20 years. But anyway, so far, we've only got one paid request from Nagel, so it's way too early to tell. We haven't got any for Pearl Columbia yet.
I told you to agree with Ron.
He's paving.
Well, yeah, we've only got one paid request, but it's not ... he'll probably be having a second one, I think, before too, too long. But so far, there's been no quote change order on that one.
Well, catch your administrator. He's paid since, and we stand to lose 20 grand if we don't, so pay the bill.
Yep, I agree.
I'll second.
This is just for the change order from ...
This is just to approve the change order that you ...
Yeah, that covered ...
... paused on last week.
Cheryl.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
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 As far as the current bills, I don't have any insignificant, but I did notice that our frontier bill, the two highest bills, normally it's the police department that has the biggest bill on our phone bill, which is fairly common, but I see two big ones from water and sewer. Is that simply because of all these projects we have going on?
No.
It has the water, it has the water power, and we have a separate phone line to that.
They just seem bigger than normal. I mean, it's not that much a big deal, but they just seem larger than normal.
Sometimes, they might have been in this case, they all just happened to come to the office all at the same time. Otherwise, like the 8224 number at the utility office might be on its own, or, but instead, they all probably came together, and the police department's isn't even on here, so...
Yeah, it's on, it's above it.
Okay, I would like to just point out that the Miller Construction for $200 for trenching, that is for at the Veterans Memorial, and, you know, I know we gave already money toward that, but when I supported the water department putting in that line, I did not really know that we were going to have expenses turned in by other people, because I thought our employees would just be doing it, so ... but I did want to point out what that's for.
Why didn't our employees do it?
Yeah, trenching. And I was going to bring up, if council doesn't want to pay for it, then someone else will besides you, Maureen, okay?
Well, I don't have a problem with council paying for it. When I look for the money's coming from for that Veterans Memorial, I'm at least a little bit embarrassed that the county is giving more money than the building to the Arden Ward, so that bothers me a little bit, so I don't have a problem paying for it.
So, are there any other questions about the approved bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On our copy machine that you share with all the departments, is that 672 a year, or a month, or a quarter, or a half, or ... current office?
Current office.
Three different buildings.
Police department has theirs, the administrator, and then all of ours here.
So, that's monthly?
No.
Quarterly, okay. Next question is Water Department, E.J. Prescott. That one's not bad, at $650, $60. I don't know whether they're using those.
We're replacing part of our stock. The contractors have been starting from this for the project, which, at the end of the project, will get reimbursed in one form or another.
Okay. And then Midwest Tile Sewer, I'm assuming the CV parts and Fernco's, that's sketch basin parts, where are we putting $1,200 worth of them to work at?
Those are actually out on West Tile, where ...
Bull and Alley.
Yes.
Justin, don't call him.
I don't think of his name.
The catch basins out there were in disrepair. Justin had Mark Savage out there, and they said they would put him in and replace him with three block catch bases.
Yeah, we talked about that.
That's what I ...
And then, that parking lot down at Pool, or at the park, $12,000 for one guy, and then $20,800 for another guy. That is one expensive parking lot.
Did they come out of the park?
Cheryl said it did.
It is a big park.
Well, I was just down there and looked at it. You can size your parking lot by the pile of dirt that's left from it. Not that big a deal. I just think it's awfully expensive, and you bought the stone from the highest price place you could. You'd shop this around a little bit.
I know it's just my own personal opinion. I didn't, no, I'm not familiar with what those things cost, but the parking lot is significantly large, better outlined. I see that way, the way that park is used in the summer and in the fall, I see that as a tremendous asset for our ...
I'm not saying it's not a needed thing. I'm just saying, paying for it. Okay, then underground pipe and valve, we've dropped $1,100 in fittings and clamps that we had the same deal going on back at the first page. More contractor stuff?
No, I'm not pulling all of this off on contractors. We're just replenishing our stocks. We've had some breaks and other things going on.
Any other questions?
Mm-hmm. No. I'm done.
All right. If everyone's satisfied with the approved bills list, someone might move to approve those.
I'm moving the paid bills.
Howard, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Upstate.
Yes.
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 Thank you. You have a notice of a public hearing in your council packets. The Exo-Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on an application for a lot split on Thursday, October 27th, starting at 5:00 in the zoning inspector's office at 108 North Main Street. It's a lot split for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, with a physical address of 315 South Maple Street. So, if anyone has an interest in that, you can attend that meeting. And we have in the packet the Hicks TV September 10th minutes, and we have the Water and Sewer Refuge Committee October 6th minutes. Does anyone have any questions about those?
I do.
Okay.
Mike, under the heading of the Water Department, the third bullet point suggested the committee voted to remove five meters at the fairground. How do we keep track of the water we're charging them for if the meters are removed?
They both weren't, well, gone. It's a kind of a mess down there. We had a couple of meetings with it. Those meters were put in a long, long time ago to help with their infrastructure within their system. We read off these meters, we read off the meters coming off the main, their interior meters. Don subtracts, adds, takes away, there's all kinds of things. Don, Kent, and I know Jesse sat and looked at this quite often, Troy, this is going to meet their, our needs better. We're still getting, they're still getting built for our water and sewer, but they're not, we don't need them down there. We don't even maintain them.
Isn't that really what you guys have decided? It hasn't really addressed what the Fair Board wants, is that correct?
Correct. It actually, we talked about that, and, you know, they're a customer.
Right.
So, this is going to help Don with her adding and detracting each month. So, it helps them put valves in there. If they got a break in certain areas, they can put their own valves in and, you know, shut offs.
I know I was here with you a couple of weeks ago when the commissioners were here. I was here when you addressed that item, too, so...
Like I said, we're asking ...
Those will only be eliminated once they're six inches complete.
Correct. I'm not sure when Jesse's going to do that. I know she was getting with Avon, and, you know, they, she knows of their project down there. Jesse and Troy have been down there and helped them a lot over the years with, you know...
Which was supposed to cease when we ...
Right. So, that's true.
Can I answer my question?
Is the police and fire working on anything these days?
Are they working on it?
Yeah, has the committee got anything they want?
No.
Okay.
But what I'm, what I'm listening to is, I think they've done a nice job. Some men can, many, they're work force. They hired with some people that are young and aggressive, and when I say aggressive, they're ready to go to work. Very nice, very to the point.
Thank you.
And I guess what I'm trying to say is, we lost one, we've gained a couple, one hard time, one tough time. I think our chief has done a great job managing his personnel. I would, I would say, even though this opens up a can of worms, and maybe I shouldn't say anything, but I do know that I was standing in front of the cuber last week one day, and I saw a young man going on the side of the street, going about 35 mile an hour on a skateboard, and I just was cringing at the thought of somebody walking out of the drugstore and getting tasted. And then I'm thinking that we've got rules against that, and as I'm holding my breath and nothing happens down there, here comes a lady and her son on my side of the road, where I had to back up and get out of the way. So, I think maybe that's something we ought to look at a little closer. I think it's been a growing issue. If we're going to have the rule, then let's enforce it. If we're not going to have the rule, let's eliminate it. It is.
We've discussed that several different times.
I think we're going to discuss bringing ...
Bringing the guys up so that the people got to, you know, the public got to know who they were and ...
I think that's important, and I think the chief is working towards that. You had brought that up. I know it's part of his agenda. I know the mayor, I won't speak for her, but that has to be part of an ongoing public relations. Community policing. Yes, between our village and all employees, really.
Yes.
So ... and you've done a good job with that, Mayor. You've got people out there, they're visible. I applaud that.
Yeah. It's all money.
The only reason I brought it up is because I happened to see it firsthand. I wasn't, you know, third-hand story. I happened to be there, and I saw it myself.
Yeah. Finance Committee, is there anything being worked on?
(inaudible).
All right. Street lighting property, working on anything?
You are.
I am?
I hope so.
I'll have to think about that one.
The buildings and ...
The buildings at the park in this building here, yeah. Yep, Kent's working on that. Insurance Committee, anything happening with that one? Sidewalk Committee, anything to report?
Not yet.
Tell them what, tell them tonight.
Yeah, we're going to have one right after this meeting. We're going to have a meeting. And if you're getting letters, please call Mike and let him explain it before you go to the conclusion that you have to tear everything out and replace everything.
The letter should be correct.
They, Mike will explain it to you.
Well, on sidewalks, I'm really pleased to see that.
Oh, yeah.
People are repairing them, and they're looking better already.
Yep, and a lot of people are.
So, you're meeting after this meeting? Sidewalk Committee is meeting following this regular council meeting?
Yep.
Okay. It's not too late to come up, folks, if you're watching this. Come up to the meeting. And then Personnel, anything happening?
Well, it's funny you mention that. I did schedule a meeting for tonight. Mr. Beverly, that may be news to you, but we do have a meeting tonight. It's been on the board for a couple of weeks now. I don't know that we're actually going to meet. I'm not sure. Hopefully, we can get this clarified, but a question was brought to me, whether the Personnel Committee is responsible for raises, if there are any, this year. Historically, the Finance Committee has dealt with any increase in wages, and I did ask Ron, who's the head of the finance, and I think Ron talked to the mayor. I think at this point, it's safe to say that the Finance Committee is going to be making those determinations.
It's probably in the budgets, right? And I wasn't contacted how much.
Well, she thought that it would go to Personnel, since it deals with ...
Kent, did you put in your budget a certain percent?
Yes, I was. Yeah, it's all the paperwork that I've got, it's all in there.
I think my budgets are okay.
Do they include raises as a question?
Yeah, I built in a 3%, but I ...
Okay.
My budgets are almost identical to last year.
So, I was going to finance, and did last year. Years ago, it came to Personnel, and then it changed. There's been a lot of confusion. Previous administrator changed.
(inaudible).
Well, I'll tell you my opinion. The first thing Cheryl said to me was, "Well, you should look at the numbers before you guys talk about that." And I said, "You mean the numbers that the Finance Committee has?" And she said, "Yes," because I don't have the numbers. Cheryl did give me the numbers, but traditionally, I don't, as Personnel, I don't get those numbers. Personnel Committee doesn't do that, so...
Yes, Mr. Hadley.
You know, I think if Ken has budgeted money, I think it has to go into Finance. I think after Finance looks at that, we support what the member, I mean, Kent and his committee has recommended, if there are monies available.
I'm not feeling like one does a budget, though.
I understand this, but that's what I'm saying.
And I don't know what they do with their budget.
In the past, we've always supported what, or what the recommendation was within reason ... reason if we had monies to accomplish that task.
Well, I think that the question is whether it goes Personnel or whether it goes to Finance. I don't care either one.
I say let Finance have.
I would just like to know, because I'm responsible for one of those committees.
Well, I know we've let Finance do it.
So, whatever we decide, you have to bring it to the full council.
Bring it back.
I would agree that the Finance Commission should be able to decide, because once they look at the budgets that are submitted by the departments, and they have to make sure they're going to balance, they'll know whether the money's there or not.
I would support Ron Beverly's recommendation.
Okay.
And the only reason it was brought to me, and the only reason I bring it up tonight, is 'cause we're running out of time with which to make such a decision, so.
You have a committee coming up, don't you? Since we get to that rhythm.
So, maybe, maybe you should ask, maybe you should ask that the people, the committee heads who are making the proposals, have one with the 3% increase or without, I don't know, whatever you're thinking.
Scott, did you build in here, we can decide at the end, but.
I haven't, we're way under.
So, Ron Beverly made a motion to.
He's second.
It is. Mike Kelly, second, and roll call, please.
Krasny.
Hi.
Jones.
This is to have the Finance motion.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Far.
George.
Baker. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, that being said, we will have a briefer Personnel Committee tonight.
Oh, is that brief?
All right, thank you. And the Ordinance Committee have not called out. Ron Jones, is the Ordinance Committee working on anything?
No.
All right. If you ever decide you wanna change the downtown bicycle riding ordinance, then that would be you. All right. Any other committee reports from council? Maybe anyone that, any surprise ones I haven't remembered? All right. Anything else from council about any committees? All right. Then we'll go to the Administrator's Report, please.
The only other thing I had was leaf collection. I still don't know when we're gonna get out for sure, there's a couple little piles out that is not worth hiring a truck out. I'd say within a week, we'll probably be out quite early.
Is there, Ken, is there, do you know if there's any kind of a plan for the areas of town that have been afflicted by construction?
Two of the three, I hope, are pretty much out of the way.
Okay.
I mean, that's my hope, and we'll just have to do the best we can, even if something goes haywire, and you're still working on two of the three.
I just.
We'll do the best we can to get what people have.
I just wonder, because it's, at times, a real challenge just to get home for some of us, and I don't know how you're gonna get the big trucks back in there, but I'm just curious.
We'll find a way.
Anything else, Kent?
No.
All right. We will go on to the Solicitors' Report.
Resolution 2016-21, first reading by Cap. Only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a farm lease with Roger Zdick, for the farming of the vacant land in the Hicksville industrial park, and declaring an emergency, this is a housekeeping matter, the bids were done, I don't know this, last November.
Last November.
And obviously, he's been farming it, and we wanna get paid by the end of the year.
I know, we should spend the bills.
Sergeant.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Far.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Second, third reading, resolution 2016-21 by Cap. Only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio, enter into a farm lease with Roger Zdick, for the farming of the vacant land in the Hicksville industrial park, and declaring an emergency.
Sergeant.
Roll call, please.
Krasny.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Far.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep. Troy, do you have anything else in the works going on?
But, um, I think it's.
All right, thank you. So, we'll go on to the department head reports, and it appears that the police chief is not here, so unless Bob Fisher has something to say, well.
See, we got a new parking lot, they just left.
Oh, yeah, looks good.
Play long enough for the airstrip.
Fire Chief Kramer?
I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson, Dr. Melton, the department, I don't feel myself have a lot of help behind me, and I appreciate everything they do. And we have a couple functions coming up. We have the Halloween carnival, Saturday to 29th, from 5 to 8:00. And we're having something we've never done before, we're gonna give it a try. Ladies' auxiliary is gonna have a feather party finger. It's gonna be on November 12th, starts at 4:00 P.M. until the last finger.
What party?
Feather party.
Feather?
Feather bingo.
Okay.
Did you?
Turkeys and hens.
Did you say November 12?
November 12.
What's feather have to do with it?
Birds.
Turkeys and chickens.
It's like feathers on your old squares.
Feathers and pork.
There's a pork.
All right, now, I'm, I'm, yeah, coming along like the rest of us.
Maybe we could eat feathers.
Horse feathers.
That's all.
Thank you. Saturday night, yep. EMS Chief Lonnie Kessler, please.
I have a couple things, just to make sense, where Dave Whitbrink has requested a 30-day leave of absence for personal reasons, I have to bring him back to him. Beginning in November, Cody and I will both be going back to the day shift, instead of switching one week from day and the next week from second, because we are in charge of the presents for kids, and that does take a lot of work for both of us on the day shift, get all the barrels and the cans out, and everything collected.
And you have the staff covering the other areas?
For the most part, yes. We might have to pick up one night a week each, we're not real sure yet, not everybody's kind of know schedules for November.
I appreciate what you guys do, it's not easy.
And then today, we tried a company to come in and service our power cut, but we still have been serviced, and it was recommended to take that out of service. It has been in the actuary, or the, act, oh, yeah. The actuation for the hydraulic lift is leaking fluid again, so I'd like to request a PF meeting to discuss our options.
That one you just got, not too long ago?
These are the lot prior to being started here.
Okay. Isn't that the other one? I mean.
That's why this one is over here, is because it was leaking as well, and they wanted that one taken out of service. And now, the one that we are using, they also recommend, because they are fixed, we're taking out of service.
Would you buy those same types, knowing what you know now? Are those the $8,000 ones?
The power, these are feral power cuts, and they run anywhere from $12,000 to $15,000 for one cut. We have had Stryker come in and give us a demo, they are better built, they are lighter weight, they have better reuse. There are a lot of companies locally that do use Stryker power cuts.
But they are still power cuts?
Yes.
I guess the only problem that I have, sometimes being mechanically inclined gets me in trouble, I think, but if it's got a hydraulic leak, I know you can fix a hydraulic leak, but we got a business right outside of town that fixes hydraulic leaks.
Right, that's why we need to have a meeting to discuss.
Okay, all right.
All right. Sounds good.
What's a Stryker cost?
A Stryker power tie and a power load, so that there would be nothing on us with the lift, runs approximately $40,000.
So, that'd be twice as much money. Well, I'll get with you after this meeting, and I'll get with committee, and we'll have a meeting and fix this thing. But I think Ron's right, Milk Creek could fix that stuff. But it passed the inspection, though, of your people.
That I don't know. I'm not mechanically inclined to know, and I don't know if we sent it out somewhere and did not use the actual feral replacement part, if that puts any more liability on us, if something works or goes wrong.
Well, if your inspector comes back and it's not leaking anymore, what can you say?
Well, you don't know.
Yeah, but somewhere.
We'll get together after the meeting. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Is that the kind that Sherwood's got?
Sherwood has the Stryker system.
I wrote on that. Pretty nice. Not $42,000.
Do you have anything from Park Board, updates or anything? All right.
It's looking good down there, by the way.
Yeah, it looks really good. Okay, we add the fiscal officers' report.
We have your sit-in cash, and a today here today, as a, as a note, and you also have the copy of the September media conference, and we have this little, you can see that at the pharmacy, Tuesday, Thursday, the 25th or 27th, Thursday to noon. And that's all it's.
Okay. Thank you. For the mayor's report, I just wanted to remind everybody that trick-or-treating is Saturday, October 29th, 5 to 7:00 P.M. Please drive cautiously. I have no idea why I had my.
What was the time again, Mayor?
5 to 7. Oh, and I just, I did wanna thank people for getting started on their sidewalk repairs, so, and I believe you did suggest people call Mike Bailey for questions about the letters that they get in the mail.
There's several things you can do besides just, you know, automatically pull everything. He'll help you with that.
Okay. And then, I put in your packet tonight, a letter from the commissioners.
Everything's on there, Mayor, except how much?
I just told you today, $15.
Okay. I did not know that. And the Halloween carnival was mentioned at the fire hall, and I guess if there's other activities going on around town for just trick-or-treating, they'll be on the Tribune.
On our website.
On our village website, yes, don't forget to go to our website. Is there anyone that's sitting out there that wants to address council about anything? Okay. Anything that anybody at this table's thought about they forgot to say? Okay. Does anyone wanna go home?
Unmove, leave, adjourn.
Second up.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Far.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Krasny.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Great job, everyone.
Good job, Mayor.
Committees, committees are working hard.